Number 10, 2012 meeting of the East Bend School District Board of School Directors to serve by call to order. Please rise and join me in slinging the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have only one request to address the board, this is the next item on the agenda. It appears to be from two people, Paula Whitman and Jeff Lattay of Imaze speaking on curriculum.
Jeff is handing you excerpts from two books that are on the recommended reading list for the summer. First book is called Prep and it's on the ninth grade list. And the second book called The Electric Kool-Aid Acid Test, that's on the 10th grade list of the recommended books to read over the summer. Now if you read those, you will see excerpts from Prep on page 315 graphically describing a minor girl, her first time performing oral sex, with explicit detail and references to swallowing. This is one of many inappropriate sections in this book. The second excerpt from The Electric Kool-Aid Acid Test book on page 176 describes a drug and alcohol induced gangbang with detailed pornographic descriptions of listening semen, sexual acts of orifices being filled over 50 times. I mean, why would this administration think that pornography is age appropriate for underage schoolchildren? If the words in these excerpts were shown in a movie, it would be X-rated. If the words in this excerpt were being shown, children wouldn't be able to see this. It's inappropriate for their age. I don't know why it's appropriate for that to be a recommended book for them to read. I mean, ages 12, 13, 14 year old kids are reading more or less pornography. I mean, as parents, we work hard to guide our kids. We want them to grow up to be upstanding citizens. We don't expect to be undermined by our own school district. I think the school board and administration owe the public an explanation on how pornographic material like this could be recommended to our children. I would like answers at least to the following questions by the next school board meeting. Do you think it's appropriate for 12, 13, 14 year old children to read this kind of material? Who approved this book being on the list? Who's going to accept the responsibility for this? And is someone going to review the books on the list and remove pornographic books like this? Imaze is my alma mater. I'm appalled, disappointed, disgusted when I discovered this is in not only one, two books, but more. This is just a small example of what's in these books and there's many more. I've read them. And I just can't believe that this was something that was actually recommended for these schoolchildren of these ages to read. They have none on their plate. I don't think they need to be learning it from a book in this way. So, that's my issue. I hope it's going to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitman. Another request to address the board, move on to approval of minutes. Can I have a motion please? Is there any petitions or corrections to the minutes? Not appearing. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Minutes are approved. We'll now move on to the report of the superintendent of schools, Dr. Thomas Seidberg.
May I respond? This one still a lot of page?
Yes.
People online, you do have a process in this district for issuing a complaint about objectional material. If you hang around afterwards, I'll show you how to do that. You're welcome to submit those requests. We have a process in place. I'm going to start with enrollment. I think my superintendents report looks like overall district-wide about 42 kids from this time compared to last year. Big differences elementary program, although we had less students moving in. By the way, Mrs. Campbell's preparing another report for you, petitions and withdrawals, which will pass out as soon as we complete that report. I want you to last year with move-ins and move-outs. I think you'll find that very informative. Again, elementary, we're up 51. Middle school up 30. High school, trying to continue that, we're down slightly, about 39 students. Overall, we're the plus 42. As we get into specialty, I'll provide work with information relative to special items. Also, my packet, I was pleased to inform the board about PSBA's annual staffing survey. And I think the numbers are what they were last year when I reported, but nonetheless, again, in terms of how many pupils we have for faculty, how many pupils we have for management which is administration, I think we're certainly one can conclude that although people may have an opinion about us being top-heavy or heavy, or we're certainly not heavy in faculty or in management. To give you an idea, in school districts, populations of 4,340 or more, the districts in that range of faculty per student is 13.7, ours is 15.15, and the state average 13.2. Again, in management, districts that are our size or above, there's 187 pupils per administrator. This district, there are 217 students per administrator. Again, demonstrating that we're not certainly top-heavy. The average for all districts across the state is 157.4 students per administrator. Again, so I think, I would say at least we're frugal on stat. Age ratio, our disper- public's benefit, our age ratio is 0.37, something for below, which indicates that we're kind of on the wealthy end of school districts. Again, districts in our age ratio, our age ratio 12.9 students per faculty, again, ours is 15.15. Districts in our age ratio category 155.2, here again, we're 217. And so, you can see once again, when you look at areas and the districts, the silver wealth factor, we certainly are above the state averages. And in every type, we are suburban in all suburban districts across the state. The average faculty per student is 13.4, we're 15.15. Management, also suburban districts across the state, regardless of size or economic condition, 165.5, we're at 217. So, again, the people think we may be a little understaffed. I don't think that's the case at all. Okay, well, I'll highlight the achievements of several outstanding staff members. First, I'd like to recognize Scott Bitter from the high school. He was awarded the Philadelphia University Centennial Educator Award at their annual university convocation in August. He's been a nice medal. And I'll tell you, he won the award by being nominated by four of our students who are incoming freshmen. Just yesterday, we reformed Ross Cooper. Ross is a distinguished alma educator. He's received another award. He is recipient of the Jacobs Educator Award from the University of Indiana. That's Indiana University in Holington, Indiana. And that particular program recognizes K-12. Teachers across the U.S. are using technology to support inquiry-based education or learning activities. Nice thing is Ross will get a little bit of cash reward, which he can then reinvest with technology and sponsorship. He gets his expenses paid to interact with professors from the University of Indiana. So, we're very proud of Ross. He's done a remarkable job. And I can tell you that when visitors from across the country come here in April, they'll have an opportunity to interact with Ross as well. And I think, two things I'd like to tell you, this is in the class category, nice. And nice to see our staff members recognized by other entities. Kelly Weaver, teacher at Lower McCounchee Middle School, she's been selected to be part of the billboard campaign featuring prominent Redding High School graduates. And so, Kelly will have a feature on billboards surrounding the Redding area school district. Access Rose 22 within the city of Redding. So, we're going to congratulate Kelly for being an outstanding Redding High School graduate. I think it brings honor because it says, "Kelly Sands Weaver, teacher, Lower McCounchee Middle School, East Penn School district Redding graduate." And then finally, if everybody picked up the 24, you stood. Oh, you did. It's on the back page, front section. Congratulations to our own Dr. Tora, who was featured as a prominent Raving College graduate. Certainly, I know personally all the time that Dr. Tora Spence, working with professors at Raving College, is near and dear to her heart. And it's always nice to be recognized by the place that you graduated from. Congratulations. I guess, really nice on official record. Very, very good piece. Also, one of the hot issues going on in the state are arguments about EIT, tax scholarship program. Name red one, call today Joe Roy, superintendent, Alfred did an outstanding job of explaining our perspective as superintendents on how this new legislation, I would certainly agree with Joe's presumption that this is not necessarily a scholarship program, it's politics. It doesn't help all the education in Pennsylvania, it helps private schools in Pennsylvania. I think Joe is dead on. I think if you read his rationale compared to the Secretary of Education's, I think you see that Joe did a nice job. Last thing, I received a request from Jeremy Fogel and John Kingsley. John Kingsley is representative from Lehigh Valley Industrial Council. They are requesting to appear before the board on the 24th of September. And we'll put them on the agenda. They will let me comment and discuss the tax program, the tax fifth program with you. So, we'll put that on the agenda. If I get additional information between now and 24th, I will certainly make sure to get it out. That's all I have, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Seidberg. Are there any questions for Dr. Seidberg about his report? Same none. Moving on to item two, personnel, including the addendum. Does I have a motion to that effect, please?
No.
Okay. Now, is there any discussion on this item? Not appearing, Ms. Burtsel, will you call roll please?
Mr. Ershaw.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha, aye. Ms. Fuller, aye. Mr. Paulakana, aye. Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Ms. Horry.
Aye.
Mr. Bowler.
Aye.
Seven ahs, two nays.
All right. Then I'd like to introduce Assistant Principal of Hayside School, Laura Whitman. Come on, it's our president. Shake everyone's hand. Welcome. Laura's coming out from Twin Valley.
The next item on the agenda is business operations. Is there any objections to moving items one, two, and three together? Can I have a motion to that effect, please? What? One? Okay, we'll take item number one then. Do I have a motion on item number one? All right, it's a discussion on item number one. Stachus.
That's 15,675 for Buzz Burger.
Do we have a page reference to that, please?
Page one. Check 16450. They look at the company as though it's like a double contract construction or something like that, but it's not really here.
I think the name of the company is what? Buzz Burger. Buzz Burger, aye. Ms. Serbo, do you have some information on that?
To supply and install wood carpet at seven elementary schools. And it's something that's covered by Bucks County IU bid, so it's a property purchasing bid, so we'd have to fit ourselves.
Okay, so it's carpeting?
Wood carpeting, so it's like the mulch kind of thing.
Oh, wood for the mulch for playgrounds, okay.
Right.
Safety requirements require us to have those, that mulch on playgrounds, okay? Okay. So, state contract did, so that's all we can fit out of state.
By Bucks County IU.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have two more. One's the plastic side for, it was for 2,300 and we'll need to fit ourselves. Check on 54 on page four.
Supplies.
Usually, when things are on the agenda with their checks, people usually call us in advance so that we can be prepared to answer these questions, because there's so many bills here and you can only remember a little bit after the things. That's how they were in windmill, so they couldn't get any other information on those things. It has it with the back, you know, it's going to be fine. It's some supplies that were bought for Lower McCounchee Middle School, if I can tell you at this point. And how the DWR, the receivable funding.
Do we have page number?
Page five.
We'll slide on again, those are the...
16579. VWR is a, VWR Sergeant Welch, which is a scientific company. So, lots of supplies were bought from the high school science department.
It would be helpful, Ms. Stachus, if you'd call in these questions ahead of time so the staff could be prepared to answer them more quickly. Are there any other questions on item number one? Ms. Burtsel, will you call roll please?
Ms. Holly, aye. Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Mr. Paulakana.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Mr. Ershaw.
Aye.
Mr. Bowler.
Aye.
Is there any objection to putting items two and three together? I have a motion to that effect, please. Is there any discussion on items two and three? Not appearing, Ms. Burtsel, will you call roll please?
Mr. Rhodes.
Aye.
Ms. Holly.
Aye.
Mr. Ershaw.
Aye.
Mr. Stolz.
Aye.
Mr. Barker.
Aye.
Ms. Doncha.
Aye.
Ms. Fuller.
Mr. Paulakana.
Aye.
Mr. Bowler.
Aye.
All right. Is there any new business to come forth, Board, this evening? Ms. Donchas?
Yes, I have a suggestion and I have a handout here, how they took home. This is a suggestion, I guess I'll put it in the form of a motion, that all documents that are prepared for the East Bend School Board include identifying information, including but not limited to the date created, the office in which it was created, the page numbers, and if the data is provided, the source of data. And why I bring it to our attention is...
You're discussing a motion now?
Oh, sorry.
Ms. Stachus. At this point, the chair is going to rule that that is an improper motion. And the reason for that ruling is that that's a substantive issue, which by your own statements in the past of wanting transparency, the public should have the ability to be able to comment on. And they have not had any notice that this note, this motion was going to be made because it was not included in the agenda. So, therefore, this, I am ruling that this motion is improper at this time and will be placed on the agenda to be discussed as unfinished business at the next agenda. So, therefore, all members of the board and the public will have sufficient notice of the content of this agenda.
Should I just not note on it?
No, just give the notice, the amendment to Ms. Burtsel, which will put it on and we'll have a full discussion at the next time. Is there any further new business to come forth, Board? Mr. Stolz?
I know we'll leave this call under the same category, but we get things nice, okay, to the superintendent, and I do appreciate that. We get them either via email or some kind of practice like this. And I would like to make a motion that these be placed on the website along with the agenda for later reading.
Again, Mr. Stolz, I will rule that's an improper motion because the public needs to be able to discuss it under the sunshine law and we'll have it on the next agenda. I would point out, though, that there are certain things that are considered pre-decisional information that may be in the superintendent's report that are not subject to public disclosure.
And if something has to be redacted, I would say, well, Pentagon, you know, I certainly may be in the East Bend school, certainly.
Okay, we'll discuss those two motions at the next meeting. Ms. Donchas?
Could we add one more to that, please?
You have another motion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I had mentioned it before, so it's not totally new, that the full budget code that's from the Pennsylvania chart of accounts be included for the check number on the check summary.
Isn't that part of the first motion you made? It said to have all the account information associated with anything provided before?
No, the first one has to do with identifying a page of every document, so it would get separated, and that there's always untraceable accountability back to the document where the check summary has a listing of the checks. And like this evening, I'm asking public questions in some people's opinions, but if the charge code was on there, I think it would be clearer and not that I could never ask, but I would probably have to not ask as many times because we could tell from the chart of accounts exactly the function, the object, the pool, the matter of the purchase and so forth.
We'll put that question also, just give the statement to Ms. Burtsel, we'll put that on the unfinished business section of tomorrow, of the next board meeting. Mr. Stolz?
I don't know if anyone else, I haven't read through these exact services this meeting. So, I just, I'm taken aback and kind of surprised that we've been having anything like this on the suggested reading list. I don't remember anything long before I was in a high school or an Hayside school. And I would just ask if I may, Dr. Seidberg, what is the process for getting things like this on, as a reading list?
Basically, staff members from the high school English departments make recommendations. And if you remember correctly, my first board meeting, that's a superintendent, a challenger on these books.
I remember them.
It's one of the same books. Yes, it is. Just probably parents who have them down this street and through, but they take the time to go through the complaint process. We'll bring together another committee after all those five years. Staff members make recommendations. They look at those books then from a variety of sources, including the high school library against the law. They look at a variety of literature resources, books that have won awards, there's a whole plethora of information coming from library sources. And what these parents are talking about, these are optional books, they're not required books. They are books that students may opt to read during the summer and certainly if a parent subject or something, we are processes will go through.
And I understand that this is just suggested reading, no optional is different. I understand that this is optional. The fact that the, I'm not, I'm surprised that any, I would read this content at a board meeting. I would not feel that it was appropriate to read out loud at a board meeting. And I think that's probably a test of whether or not it's children appropriate. I mean, if I read an excerpt out of either of these, although this one seems to be, perhaps seems to be a little bit more graphic, I'd be charged with corruption of the house minors. Again, I don't, I don't know much about the book, but I would, because I'm sure this is the same route that you're going to go, I would like to see a motion on the next agenda to remove both of these books from the suggested reading list.
We have a process, Mr. Stolz, going through that.
I understand that, but as a board member, I feel that it's my moral duty to make sure that something like this is not on the suggested reading list. I've taken history class, I watch the History Channel, I know what happens when we go down the road of manning books that are not suggested. I just don't want this on the optional reading list for 13, 14, 15 year old kids, particularly if this is on freshmen, optional reading list.
Well, we'll put that motion on the unfinished business also.
Thank you.
But I would point out that it is going down the route of manning books.
That may be your, did you page through this, Ms. Bowler?
I've looked at it, yes. And I'm familiar with Tom Wolfe's writing and all those things. We'll have a discussion on it at the next meeting, Ms. Stolz.
Ms. Donchas?
As the board were responsible for the curriculum, that...
Were responsible for approving the curriculum, but that does not include every item on the curriculum.
And is that a part of the yearly basis or is this my first time, so I just face a lot of questions?
Whenever we have curriculum revisions, they're all brought before the board. Each class, it will say high school math or it will say high school English. It's a big set of pamphlets that we get probably every two to three years, depending on what cycle they're, that particular set of courses is on.
Now, this has been on here for a while, huh?
Yeah, about five years.
If I may volunteer...
But Ms. Donchas still has the floor. Ms. Bowler, are you done, Ms. Donchas? Ms. Bowler?
Well, if I may volunteer, that if we, this is an optional reading, there are even... There are even paragraphs about the content of the book for parents to use. So parents do get a heads up if they feel the system is a bit wishful. I think that we are taking precautions about the curriculum. And I think that we have a very, in some cases, a very sophisticated study body that it would be appropriate for some students. I absolutely agree, it might be appropriate for all. We just have the mechanism in place for parents who wish to be confident of what the content of the books would be, to cover them, to look at the content. And may I venture that it is no more alarming than much of the content to counter the other part of the curriculum. I really don't think it's wrong.
I think we should reserve further comment for the motion when it comes up next meeting. Ms. Serball?
I have nothing to debate on the motion this time, just an explanatory clarification about curriculum. The curriculum does not specifically list books that might be read as part of a supporting guide. The curriculum outlines the principles that must be mastered, the standards that must be met, and some of the mechanisms by which we deliver that content and assess it. It doesn't go through and say, in order to teach students principle X, they will read textbook Y. They're disconnected, it's not part of the curriculum. The reading list, we, as part of the curriculum, approve summer reading assignments, that in other words, we require certain students to read during the summer to prepare for the next school year, but the curriculum doesn't delineate which books they read. That's an implementation of the curriculum that's handled by many, as Dr. Seidenberger
Any other new business to come up? Not appearing. We had an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss personnel negotiations, and the next board meeting will be at 7:30 p.m. the 24th. I have a motion to adjourn today. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.